Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order to the August 17th meeting of the Brian City Board of Education. Let's begin by having the pledge of the flag. Do you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting. Boy, school is just about in session. It's ready to start this week. This morning, we had a teacher breakfast that we welcomed all of our new staff members and faculty back, and there's a lot of excitement, a lot of neat things happening in our school district. Let's begin with roll call. Rob?
Emily Ebaugh?
Here.
Sandra Keeler?
Here.
Tom Lingbi?
Here.
Ryan Miller?
Here.
Glenn Newcomer?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, fellow board members, I hope you had the opportunity to review the minutes to the July meeting. Upon that review, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they have been submitted to us? If not, could I have a motion approving them?
So moved.
Seconded by Emily, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Tom. Please call the roll, Rob.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Okay, I am unaware of any public participation at this time, and so we will move therefore into communications. We'll work out a report from Sandra.
School starts tomorrow. That's exciting. All those juniors and seniors, there'll be about a thousand of them. I don't know the exact number. I'll have that next month as enrollment comes in, but other than that, it's bid time. We accepted bids last month for, you know, all the essentials, the bread, the milk, et cetera, and contract time renewing and hiring substitutes and mentor teachers, so business as usual, just like here.
It's that time of year.
It's that time of year.
Everything's ready to roll.
I look forward to the year to come. Thanks.
Well, good. I know their enrollment continues to increase over there, and there are a lot of positive things happening at Ford County.
Yes, very much so. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Sandra. Moving right along, we'll go into the treasurer's report and recommendations. Rob?
Okay, thank you. We'll start by reviewing our financial reports for the month ended July 31, 2015. Our cash reconciliation report at Farmers Emergency State Bank, balance of $9,104,395. Outstanding checks and adjustments, $84,212. Investments at Star Ohio, $3,231,511. At Morgan Stanley, $37,216,714. At State Bank, $4,3,684. Petty cash and change funds totaled $4,500. Total funds on hand at the end of July, $53,476,591. Our funds, general fund balance at the end of July was $10,542,806. Permanent improvement fund balance, $1,911,123. Our LFI fund for construction for our project, $3,299,68. Our project construction fund, our local share, $32,556,211. And our project construction fund, state share, $4,119,727. Provide you some of the major funds. Once again, total balance is $53,476,591. Any questions regarding those reports? Not, we'll move on to our appropriations, our permanent appropriations. We're setting those for the school year. We previously sent temporary appropriations back in May. These are a little more final for the year. Appropriations total, $25,126,204. Notably, our general fund appropriations are $19,813,676 out of those totals. Any questions relating to permanent appropriation resolution? If not, we'll continue on. We have some donations this month. We'd like to recognize the Brian Times for providing us with seven pieces of plywood valued at approximately $100. First Brother in Church provided us 72 three-inch or one-inch binders for the preschool program, and Tom Herman donation of $500 for the Brian High School golf team. We'd like to ask you for your approval for our bread bid for this 2015-2016 school year. We'd like to use Nichols Bakery per the recommendation, Mr. Bassett, of bids that we received. Nichols Bakery was the low bidder. Petty cash fund and change funds for the upcoming school year, we'd like approval for $4,000 for high school athletics, $500 for treasurer's office change funds, $2,000 for high school athletics, $400 for middle school athletics, $250 for concessions, $200 for the cafeteria, $50 for each at the high school, middle school, Lincoln Elementary and Washington Elementary, and $200 for the preschool office. Ohio Department of Education has provided us tuition rates for the 2015-2016 school year. In-state tuition is $5,903.66 per student. Out-of-state tuition would be $9,229.33 per student. And finally, we ask your approval for the service agreement for St. Patrick's School for services that they are contracting with the Community Hospital and Wellness Center of Williams County for services for St. Patrick's School Special Education students for the exhibit. Any questions? That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Rob. There are no additional questions for Rob. Is there a motion supporting the treasurer's recommendations and report for the month?
Also moved.
By Sandra?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ryan. Rob, please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on into old business. We have a lot of construction going on these days, and so under old business, we'd like to have a report update on the construction.
Yes, well, we don't, we did not receive our monthly report from Rudolph Libby due to some extended vacation, but we know that the work is continuing. We can see it. We can see walls going up. To update the board and the community on where we are as of today, the site work is just about complete. They should be seeding all of the excess topsoil around the work site that they can within the next few weeks. The foundations are almost complete and are on schedule. As you can see, the walls are starting to go up, and steel should be starting to arrive very soon. They were able to go ahead and asphalt the roads outside of the construction zone today. They did that today, this morning. And just for the community and parents, the road that is now located where the old playground and older bike path was that extended from the middle school out to Cardinal Drive will be open for students to walk on. We ask that parents do not drive on that road, and there are barricades still in place to keep cars off of that road, but we've cleared it with the construction manager, and students will be able to use that to walk to and from school starting on Wednesday. So we're glad to have that. We do have some new contractors on board. Fedders is our general contractor. Woolis Electric is on board, and LR Babcock is on board for the plumbing. And then finally, I did get a phone call from Mayor Johnson today. He wanted me just to give the update to the board on County Road C. They are also going to speak of that today in their city council meeting. The Mayor Johnson said that they're currently working on County Road C. Last week, I believe, or a couple of weeks ago, they did some grinding in spots where the road is more dirt and gravel. That is not their finished product. They will be coming back through to address those areas and to lay a layer of asphalt over top of them, so expect to see that within the next week or two. They are not planning at this time to address, what they have in their budget and in their plans will not address some of the flooding concerns that happen on C when we get a lot of rain, but they are aware of it, and they are working on that. Also, they did receive news from the state that the federal grant money that they were applying for was denied for this year, but they were encouraged to reapply again next year for that grant. They are willing, and we are working with them. We have money within our plan and construction budget to address some of the turn-in lanes, and they currently have around $300,000 budgeted in their current budget for asphalt, which they will work with us to see what they can do on their own for County Road C. So it was a disappointment to hear about the grant, but we are committed to working with the city, and the city is committed to working with us to address the concerns of County Road C and to make things as best as they can. But just one final reminder, when they are working on the roads, that they will be shut down for a while, and so we try to get that news out to people as soon as possible so they're aware of that construction.
Are you aware, has anyone made contact with township trustees from Plaskite? Because the south half of that road is a township, is considered a township road.
I know that Brian Whelan, the city engineer, has been working with them. I have not made any direct contact with the township trustees, but I do know that Brian Whelan has had conversations. We had conversations previously with them, but not since getting the news about the grant.
No. I think in regards to, they do need to be kept in the loop because they will have some input in regards to how that project progresses.
Diana, so I just want to clarify that the city is committed to doing some asphalt work, but there's no plans for widening or improving that road at all prior to the opening of the new school?
We are still hopeful that some widening can be done. It just depends on what the city has planned and within their budget. We plan to meet with the city engineer next week when we have our core meeting with the state and our construction meeting and hope to get some answers then. Thank you.
I think one of my concerns is that, you know, one of the things that we put a lot of emphasis on was safety of traffic flow and the current condition of that road, and it needs substantial improvement. And when you look at the avenue of the traffic that flows around our city, our town, this is the main main route. And I urge the city, the people that have any input on this, to really consider the importance of it and that it receives the proper attention.
Any other questions related to construction?
Will we publish with athletic events and fall sports getting ready to kick off here in the next couple of weeks, especially with the football facility being adjacent to us with new parking and construction updates? Will there be additional parking information given out to people so they know where they can go? Are we just going to plan on using the middle school parking lot?
Well, we've already been on top of that. We've already contacted other schools that will be visiting us or will contact them as it dates get closer. We've worked with Mr. Ruffer to cordon off some areas for additional parking. We're working with Mr. Ruffer to get some volunteers so that we can maximize that space as much as possible. We've really used up all the green space we have, and I've been in touch with the mayor and with, just talking with him about the fact that there could be parking on city streets for some of our events this year. And Eric was going to contact some of the churches in the area because their parking lots might see some traffic as well. So we've been, we've already been on the job being proactive in that area.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Tom, I know you've also been attending meetings. In regards to any comments you'd like to contribute?
Well, as Diana has said, it was a disappointment not to get the grant for the improvement of C. In my conversations with the city engineer, I mean, he recognizes that the road has to be improved because it's going to have a significant increase in traffic on it. The, couple of the options that he has laid out in terms of a temporary fix to the road would improve it in terms of width and smoothness of ride, which would, you know, make it a very, very usable means of access to the school site. And I think if you go back to the original traffic study, and I don't know if everybody has rendered or not, but at the time of the presentation, the engineer that did the traffic study and prepared, with the addition of the turn lanes, which are our responsibility on both C and Town Line Road, she had indicated, based on the traffic count, the current traffic count, as well as the anticipated traffic count, a two-lane road with the appropriate turn lanes would make, and I think a minor adjustment to the traffic speed limit, would make that road a very acceptable means of access to the school site and a fairly safer means of access to the school site. So, you know, there is a disappointment not getting the grant, but there are some, you know, plans in way to make the necessary improvements, so I think it'll get done, or I'm quite certain it'll get done. It just, you know, the full, let's say, the full level of improvement that we'd like to see to the road is going to happen somewhere's down the road, unfortunately. And you alluded to, you know, Plaskite Township trustees. They've sat in on a couple of discussions, so they're well aware, and I think they're, and they've even made commitments to the city engineer in terms of what level of participation they were going to be involved in, whether he's going to be able to get additional commitment out of them, I don't know. I know he's talked with the county engineer. The county engineer has indicated that he's prepared to take and assist in the improvement at some level. What level that is at this time, I'm not sure, but I think the significance of that is that it's not even a township or a county road in terms of his responsibility, so the fact that he's willing to participate, I think, is commendable.
Great. Thank you. And again, just the public asks all the time, where are we at in the construction? Are we on schedule?
We are on schedule, and we are on budget.
That's what we wanted to hear. I know with the weather that we've had this summer, there's been a great deal of concern whether we're falling behind or if we're on target, but with the coordinated effort between all of the people working on it, it sounds like we're moving as planned. Thank you. Okay, I'm unaware of anything that needs to be discussed under new business at this time, so therefore, we will go into the superintendent recommendations for the month.
Okay, thank you very much. Under administrative recommendations, we are going to start off with the annual transportation approval of bus stop locations as established by the transportation supervisor for this school year, authorization to relocate those school bus stop locations as needed, and payment in lieu of transportation at the rate established by ODE for the 2015-16 school year in the event that we have a student that is impractical to transport within the meaning of ORC. Also next, we have an annual agreement that we sign with First Brother in Church just as a safety evacuation site. We have a legal update to our healthcare flex spending amendment, excuse me, that you can see in Exhibit G, and this is an annual or a change with the healthcare flex spending laws, so we have to bring ourselves in line with legal. Next, we have a resolution to formally recognize district support organizations of the Brian City School District. If you look at the resolution, we're asking this evening that you recognize the Brian Athletic Boosters, the Brian Music Boosters, the Elementary PTO Organization, and the Academic Booster Club. This came about as actually an initiative from Jeff Jordan and the OHSAA. There are some organizations, support organizations across the state that were running into some problems, and therefore, some new regulations came with a little bit more school oversight. In the resolution, it lays out exactly what we expect of our formal booster organizations and what we as a school can ask for if we suspect that there might be a problem. But I want to be really clear that in Brian City Schools, in all four booster groups, we have met with nothing but support, and we have no concerns in our area in regards to these regulations. This is just a state mandate that we are following on the basis of attorney recommendation. Questions on that? We have an approval of overnight trip for the girls tennis team. Again, my apologies to the board that this is in arrears, but the state tournament site came up, and we were unable to get everything ready before the last board meeting. So we did have that trip. We do need it formally board approved. Next, you have the Wood County Juvenile Detention Education Program Agreement. This, again, is an annual agreement for any of our students that might be placed at Wood County Juvenile Detention. And then finally, this evening, we'd like you to approve the agreement with Great Lakes Biomedical for our random student drug testing program. This is something we've been talking about since last school year. We did open bids and received three separate bids from companies within Ohio and Michigan. We met as a committee. We reviewed the bids. Great Lakes had the lowest price per student test. We felt that they had the most experience and the great references that we called other schools in the area. So I'm asking this evening that you approve the agreement with Great Lakes Biomedical. It is anticipated that we will get through this first year of implementation and then relook at the services that we are getting. Within the contract that you have before you, this is a contract that can be canceled with a 30-day written notice. So we plan to utilize them for this school year and then reevaluate our experience at the end of the year. Questions on that?
And for our benefit at this time, Great Lakes, they have the most experience of handling drug testing programs.
Yes, across the state of Ohio, those schools that do random student drug testing, they have about 80% of the market.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Diana in regards to the administrative recommendations for the month? If not, may I have a motion supporting those recommendations?
So moved.
Tom, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Sandra.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Under personnel recommendations, we have a resolution to reemploy a non-teaching employee. Doug Jacobs will be, is retired as a bus driver, and we would like to rehire him as a bus driver.
Okay. Did you want to do the personnel recommendations on the addendum as well?
I'm going to stop there for now.
Okay, at that time?
And then I'll get the addendum, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion supporting the resolution to reemploy?
So moved.
Just moved by Emily. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ryan. Please call the roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Now, through the lengthy list of personnel recommendations, we will move from both the regular agenda and to the addendum, and I will point out when we're going back and forth. First of all, an approval of FMLA leave for Kim Bassett. Next, we have resignations that happened in July and August. Kami Back is pre-K5 secretary, effective July 31st. Sherry Elster as classroom aide, effective August 3rd. Kathy Frank is middle school quiz bowl advisor. Janet Gilmore is academic league advisor. Shannon Worsler is grade one teacher, effective July 31st, and Kelly Zachridge is grade four teacher, effective July 31st. On the addendum, we also have resignation from Don Carroll in his paid-as-work position as a Ford County bus aide, and that's effective August 1st. A release from employment for Brian City Schools, effective August 6th, for Craig Bashore. We would like to extend a one-year limited teaching contract to the following individuals. Amber Dobell, who will be teaching grade four ELA. She comes with seven years' experience at the master's level. Kathy Detwiler, kindergarten intervention, 10 years' experience at the bachelor's level. Jessica Mitchell, grade seven science teacher, zero years' experience at the bachelor's level. Julie Scribner, grade four intervention, 10 years' experience at the master's level. Colin Walker, high school social studies teacher, zero years' experience at the bachelor's level. Those are all on the A1 salary schedule, and Collins is a part-time teaching contract at 29.268%. Under classified personnel, Kelly Dean as Lincoln recess classroom lunchroom aide, zero years' experience, 4.75 hours per day. John Ely is in-school suspension and online student monitor for zero years' experience at 4.75 hours per day. Brandon Gambler is high school second shift custodian at zero years' experience, eight hours per day. Dave Hug, this is a correction, and this is listed on your addendum, but he is a bus driver who will be driving a shuttle route with six years' experience at one and a half hours per day, two and a half hours paid as worked as van shuttle driver. Katie Keel is six-to-12 secretary with one year experience, eight hours per day. Jennifer Marvin is high school resource room lunch duty aide, zero years' experience, four hours per day. Adrian Mohica, middle school lunch duty, library aide, one year experience, 4.25 hours per day. Kathleen Ottenweller, arrival CD classroom aide, zero years' experience, four hours per day. Judy Smith, high school one-on-one aide, zero years' experience, 6.25 hours per day. And Jaclyn Wilson, Washington second shift custodian, zero years' experience, four hours per day. And then finally, Gary Beck is second shift custodian at Central with zero years' experience, four hours per day for student days only, and all of those hires for classified personnel are effective beginning August 19th on Wednesday. Hire student cafeteria workers on an as-needed basis, and those students are listed for you. Transfer of classified personnel, Alex Campbell, the second shift middle school custodian, that was effective today. Heidi Brown to pre-K to five secretary at the middle school for this school year. Carrie Deckrash to middle school one-on-two bus duty aide, 7.25 hours per day, effective on Wednesday. Robin Diaz to second shift high school custodian, effective today. Aubrey Dixon to preschool one-on-one office aide, 3.75 hours per day, four days a week, that'll be effective Wednesday. Tammy Elliott to middle school one-on-one aide, 7.25 hours per day, effective on Wednesday. Lori Grimm to high school MD classroom aide, seven hours a day, effective on Wednesday. Cindy Haas to middle school library aide, 4.75 hours, effective Wednesday. Dee Herman to high school classroom aide, seven hours per day and one hour per day as worked as a van shuttle driver. Robin Horg to Washington, one-on-two aide, 7.5 hours per day. Sandy Keller to pre-K to five secretary at Lincoln. Chastity Lanius to Washington CD classroom aide, four hours per day. Janie Lockoff to Washington classroom aide, 4.75 hours per day. Angie Lemons to Washington one-on-two aide, eight hours per day. Maria Panico to high school one-on-one aide, 7.75 hours per day. Linda Piper, lunchroom detention aide, 4.75 hours per day. Candy Retcher to preschool, four hours a day, four days a week. Beth Syracusa, high school one-on-one aide, 6.25 hours per day. Carolyn Stanbaugh to one-on-two aide at the high school, 7.75 hours per day. Vicki Stanbaugh to Lincoln, one-on-one aide, at seven hours per day. And Teresa Whelan to six-to-12 secretary at the middle school for this school year. Again, those effective dates for aides are Wednesday, and for all others were today. Transferring certified personnel, effective with this school year, Chris Hoopie will be moving to grade one. Sarah Chopper to grade four math. Catherine Gabriel to high school social studies and Spanish. And Julie Cummins to high school math and Spanish. I'm asking that the board approve a change in contract for Doug Shimmler. Originally, we asked Doug to teach one period a day. He will now be teaching three, and that's a 43.9% teaching contract. Also on the addendum, I ask the board to approve change in hours for classified personnel. Carol Hoffman should be at 7.25 hours a day. Michelle Missler at 4.75 hours, and Sue Schulenburg at seven hours, and those are all effective August 19th. We have a list of mentor teachers for the board approval. As a reminder, with the residency educator program, new teachers are required to have a mentor for the first two years of their employment. So you see our mentor teachers listed and their teachers that they will be mentoring. Salary schedule placements, we have lots of teachers that have went back to school to get additional education. Julie Cummins is now at her masters. Vicki Idnauer at masters plus 20. Catherine Gabriel at masters plus 20. Chris Hoopie at masters plus 20. Brandon Knott at masters plus 10. Nicole Manahan at masters. Chris Minor at masters plus 20. Jen Schilling at masters plus 10. Heidi Stark at masters plus 20. And Casey Thormeyer at masters plus 20. I ask that you approve supplemental contracts for Tyler Bernath and Todd Grossjean. Tyler will be our new head golf coach, and Todd will be our new head girls basketball coach. Athletic department volunteer for this school year, Karen Meister. Middle school quiz bowl volunteer for this school year, Kathy Frank. And then on the agenda and on the addendum, you have a list of teacher substitutes and classified substitutes, and again, there were some added on the addendum for your approval as well. Any questions?
Pull that out for us.
Oh, I do. Thank you, Rob. Let's pull Casey Thormeyer's salary placement and do that in a separate motion. Thank you, Rob. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions?
Where is Casey's being pulled from?
Salary schedule placements. She's the very last one.
Very good. Thank you.
So we could start with a motion for everything and then we'll do Casey's separate.
Okay. Well, that was an extensive list. That has to be one of the longest on record, but we had the pleasure this morning of being introduced as a board to all of the new employees that are coming into our district. And it's really great to see the quality and the talent that, that are, have a desire to work in our school district. And I want to congratulate everyone who had a part in, in the interview process of bringing this talent to our district and we're very thankful for that. So having said that, is there a motion supporting the superintendent personnel recommendations on the agenda as well as on the addenda, addendum up to this point?
So moved.
Moved by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Emily.
I heard Emily. Please call the roll.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Okay. And then next then we'll do the salary schedule placement for Casey Thormeyer to the masters plus 20 level, schedule A1 salary schedule.
Is there a motion supporting that?
So moved.
Moved by Emily, second?
Second.
By Ryan, please call the roll.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Abstaining.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Next, we have approval of substitute teacher and newcomer.
Is there a motion supporting it?
Also moved.
Moved by Syndra on a second, please.
Second.
By Emily. Please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Abstaining.
Emily?
Yes.
Next, we have approval of substitute teacher and newcomer.
Is there a motion supporting it?
Also moved.
Moved by Syndra on a second, please.
Second.
By Emily. Please call the roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Abstaining.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
And my final personnel recommendation is for approval of substitute teacher Claudia Miller.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Tom?
Second.
Seconded by Syndra. Please call the roll.
Ryan?
Abstaining.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll move on to points of information.
I'm going to echo what you said, Glenn, is we had our welcome back staff meeting this morning and I thought that the excitement and the energy level was outstanding. We did have a tremendous amount of turnover this year and a tremendous amount of change, but people are very excited about their new positions. They're very excited to be working for Bryan City Schools. And we just left three of our open houses that were held this evening and they were very well attended and lots of smiling faces, ready to start school on Wednesday. So I just echo what you said earlier. Upcoming meeting dates, we do have our next board meeting on Monday, September 21st. Our Capitol Conference meeting in Columbus, November 8th through the 11th. LPDC Master Teacher Committee will be announced and Business Advisory Council will meet on September 16th at 7:00 a.m. here in the conference room. And then we do have reports from our administrative team. We've restructured a little bit, both internally and for board meetings. So this year, kicking off our administrative reports, we will start with Eric Ruffer. And Eric, if you could come to stand like right around this area, that'd be your best camera view.
Okay. I thought you wanted to see the back. To echo what they've said, I was out, it's an exciting time in our family. You know, we've got a daughter and it's going to be in kindergarten, seeing all those faces out at open house and stuff. I think my wife was going to cry because she couldn't go tonight and I was going to cry because I had to go tonight with her. But it worked out anyways. It's neat to see her getting excited about those things. To just kind of quickly go over some of our seasons, really only two of our seasons have started already. Golf's been in three invites already. They kind of finished, I think, anywhere from about seventh place to about 12th place in those, those three invites roughly. And then they played Van Works early on and beat them in a, in a duel match early. The other sport that's been going on, I believe we talked about the tennis team. They dropped their tournament game, or tournament match right away and then they've been 6-0 in their duel since then against some competition. The other sports, really, we're kind of waiting. Their seasons haven't started yet. They should start. Basically, everything's going next week. Boys and girls soccer will start next Tuesday. Girls are at Shawnee and boys are at Lakewood, or they're home with Lakewood Park. Volleyball and cross country, they start actually next Saturday. Their, their travel, or excuse me, cross country's traveling, the slime and volleyball will be home next Saturday against the Boyen. And then our last two, football and cheer. Cheers went down to Patrick Henry a week or so ago, maybe a little over a week ago and got second in a competition down there. And then also football, they had a scrimmage last Friday. The scrimmage had Anthony Wayne this Friday and then they kick off following Friday here against Van Works. So kind of install mode a little bit for some of them, but we've, the ones that have gotten started, I think, have been a solid start to the year. We're looking forward to seeing what we can do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Chad Basset with curriculum.
Good evening. First of all, we just finished up our Cub Club Summer School. That's part of our 21st Century Grant. We had for two weeks, brought in some first through fourth graders for some math and reading enrichment. Also had some fun activities planned for them there too, since they did have to spend a couple of weeks their summer with us. But a good turnout for that. Just a testing update. If you followed along, the state has changed our game again, but the part testing that we planned for last year and worked hard on no longer exists.
Never mind.
Never mind. So we do have new language arts and math tests. The kind of the fun game part of that is they're yet to be developed. So we're kind of starting off the school year just following standards and the test will be determined at a later time what that will actually look like. Good part is they did cut down the time. We talked last year a lot about the amount of time we were taking out of the classroom for testing. They have significantly decreased that, so that is one, one good thing there. And we kick off the testing right away. We're getting ready to start off our kindergarten readiness assessment. Needs to be administered in the first couple of months of school and we get a grade actually on how ready our kids are coming to us in kindergarten. So we'll get that rolling as soon as school starts.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have an update from our elementary administrators or administrator.
Yeah. Welcome. Sadly, you have one just starting and I have a senior this year at the high school, which is kind of sad to think about. I'm really not crying, I don't have tears. So we're going to close down the high school with Elizabeth and one's going to open up a new building as a freshman there, so exciting there. Couple of things with elementary, we did, we had three of our open houses this evening with Washington, Lincoln, and then grades four or five as we transition. Preschool is on Wednesday. That's from 4:30 to 6:00, so before it does, to meeting all those kids, maybe for the first time it's ever been in school, so to speak. So we're going to welcome them to Bryan City Schools. We're excited about that. Tomorrow, Amy, Karen and I get the pleasure of meeting with our pre-K to five staff. This will be our second meeting where we've all been under the same roof. So we're excited about that as we continue to work on stream, a lot of the procedures that we're doing. And we have planned this year to do several things, to bring our, our buildings together, our staffs together, with a lot of social gatherings and such. But we're also going to bring our kids together on December 14th and we're going to do a pre-K to five assembly. We're actually going to do it two shifts, so we have pre-K to two and then a three-to-five assembly at the middle school. So we have gym basketball, Jones coming in, which is a Washington favorite. He's been coming every year and it's high energy. So for those fifth graders who haven't seen gym since they were first graders, will pretty enthuse to see them. But again, we're trying to build that Bryan Elementary culture by bringing all our kids together. So it's been fun to this point. So a lot of plans gone involved. Again, as Glenn kind of said earlier and Diana kind of echoed, we hired nine new staff members this year with all the retirements and people that have left. But again, our teachers have been a part of that process and every one of the hires, which has been amazing, asking them to work in the month of July. It's been great to have them come in July and even in the first of August. So we do have some quality people, some teachers that have some great experience. We're looking forward to having them onboard. So we choose very carefully in who we bring into our, to our staff here at Bryan City Schools. But I thank our teachers, I thank Karen and Amy for their hard work and even working with Mark quite a bit this summer in July, just coordinating. Because again, as I'd hire somebody, he'd steal them for six to 12 and vice versa, I think, happening both ways once. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, we have our secondary update.
Nice call, Mike. I feel like I just checked a lot off of this. Thanks, guys. I've been speaking with all of our administrators, just passing this on from all of us. Along with the construction project going on, the buildings and grounds currently that we're in are phenomenal and we're extremely pleased with how they look. So a large thank you to them, Ruffer and the custodial staff, because they've done an amazing job as we get ready for our students and staff to come back. So, and I'll kind of echo on the staffing as well. Man, would I be excited to be a student. I tell you what, because of not only the new hires, but the veteran and experienced staff that we have and are bringing back, it's an exciting time. So we have a lot of great talent. So just kind of echo that as well. So it's a lot to look forward to. So a couple of things at the middle school, we had our open house tonight, so we are ready for day one now. All the students ready or not are coming Wednesday, so we're ready for them.